Okay, good evening. Evell City Council Meeting for October 20th to 25th, it's 5:30 here at the Council Chambers. We'll call this to order. Roll call please.
Councillor Rosie.
Here.
Councillor Kuivonen.
Here.
Councillor Purpich.
Here.
Councillor Lillis.
Here.
Come here, Rowan.
Here.
We're gonna keep that side of the room.
Okay. Add IT to the job description, resume repertoire.
Uh, that's hooked up to that here.
Okay.
You need to go get something else.
Thanks Eric. All set? Okay. First up, we'll have the approval of minutes. We have minutes of the administrative citation hearing on September 22nd of '25, minutes of the City Council Special Meeting October 2nd of '25, thank you. Minutes for the Town Hall Meeting October 2nd of '25, minutes of the City Council Meeting October 6th of '25, minutes of the City Council workshop October 9th of '25. If we weren't busy, this proved it, right? Um, motion to move?
So move.
Purpich and Rosie. Any discussion? All in favor of approving these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the agenda? Motion to move?
So move.
Support by Kuivonen. Support by Lillis. Any additions, subtractions, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We approve the agenda. Public comment. Judging by what I see in the cheering section, I will say that there will be nothing here today. We'll move on to consent of the agenda. We'll have the approval of the payrolls September 16th through the 30th of '25.
So move.
Moved by Purpich. Support by Rosie. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will pay our wonderful people. Thank you. Alright, up is new business. We'll kind of fire through here a little bit. There's not a lot on the agenda today, but things obviously that we need to get tackled, so I'm excited to get through it. Next up, for the new business memorandum of understanding between Rockford School District and Evell Police Department regarding extra security coverage by off-duty Evell Police Department officers as school district events and school locations. Motion to move?
So move.
Purpich and Lillis. Discussion, I'm gonna open the door to you chief.
Yeah, if you guys recall, what a week and a half ago, I presented this at one of our workshops. The school district's been asking for a school resource officer for a number of years. Between us, Gilbert and Virginia, neither agency's been able to provide a resource officer just due to staffing levels. So they asked us what we could do this year if the three departments could come up with something. Virginia was able to dedicate a officer Mondays and Wednesdays up there, and then the days that there is gonna be no officer up there, we are gonna fill it with overtime shifts between the three departments, Virginia, Evell and Gilbert, at a rate of $80 an hour. If neither agency wants to work that shift that day, it won't get filled that day. So the shifts are either from 8 to 1 or 10:30 to 3:30. Virginia will sign up first for the shifts. Whatever they don't take comes to Evell, and then it'll go to Gilbert then. Virginia, it's technically, it's in Virginia's jurisdiction. They're in charge of their schedule, they're in charge of the calendar, they're the kind of communication between all of this and the school. So that's how that works.
And your staff was okay with not ever having first rights to any of this?
Yeah, I mean, they realize that it's technically, it's in Virginia's jurisdiction. And they're kind of doing the heavy lifting on her. They're kind of in charge of all of this for us, so.
Do we have our officers trained in the district rules and rights per student, in the student handbook?
We do have, we do have all that here, you know, and so we're not gonna be actually acting in the SRO role. We're just there as a overtime officer, basically checking doors, that sort of thing. So we're not gonna be taking any truancy complaints where students don't show up to school and whatnot. We're basically providing security, if you will.
But they have, they have a court of...
Oh absolutely, yes, yep. And we have our own office up there, the school, we have our office there.
And our officers are familiar with the responsibilities that they have?
Absolutely.
Chief, are you happy?
I'm happy.
And I'm happy.
Yep, we need it, it's something that's needed up there, absolutely.
As long as the contract fits what you and your fellow officers are looking for then, I have no reason to push back on it. Any further discussion or any questions at all for Chief? Alright, all in favor of moving forward with this memorandum of understanding, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Next up is the proposal from WINSAT to develop budgets for the community center improvements. Anybody who is wondering what the community center is, the community center is the school portion that is left behind the gymnasium area. We'll be calling at the community center as we move forward in all of our conversations, so you'll be seeing it and hearing it often. So again, motion to move on the proposal.
So move.
Move by Purpich. Support?
Support.
Support by Kuivonen. Discussion's open?
Really kind of, we already have it outlined, we thought what we want, and we did categorize what we wanted, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, right, down the line, and there's, there is a substantial list, but I think it's well worth the effort to get things rolling up there.
Jackie, did we only get the one quote from WINSAT that we talked to DSGW?
I did not talk to DSGW. And the reason for that is, number one, the law doesn't require us to do that. Number two, we've got a pretty good working relationship with Amanda Isaac specifically at WINSAT, and she's familiar, she worked on the whole heating system, so she's familiar with the building, so it made a lot of sense. We had a planning level estimate by Bob Streeter, and this is holding it in even more, so that she can get some strong construction documents and going off bids and quotes, so, so that answers your question.
Yeah, and the reason I ask is I vaguely remember DSGW, DSGW, correct, yes. They're the ones that designed the complex back in the 90s, so I didn't know it. But perhaps after we do this first layer of work, we can touch base with them and see what they know about the building that might be good for us to be aware of as well. I mean, what we're doing here isn't really remodeling the building per se at all, it's sprucing it up. And on this, the elevator portion of it is just kind of getting the answers to what we need?
Yes, because since we're not gonna be allowing in Phase 1 access to the second floor, I'm of the opinion that we don't have to service that elevator. Let's not, unless we can get a brand new. I could probably understand to make some improvements to it. But elevators are expensive to maintain, just have somebody come and hook them in. It's like thousands of dollars a year, just to have them come by, so I'm, we need to look further into that. Like I said, since we don't plan to have access up there.
I haven't looked specifically at the elevator, but is there a locking system so that you can lock out the elevator, so?
If not, we'll have to make provisions to make sure it is locked.
Yeah.
I think with the gates that we're putting up there too, it should really help keep people out of going into there as well. But even when the gates are open for locking or something in sorts, yeah, there would be access, that's a good point. Is there any other questions regarding this proposal from WINSAT? Alright, all in favor of moving forward, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry, thank you. Alright, next up is the final payment for pay application, number 13, final for Max Gray Construction in the amount of $4,999.99 for City of Evell Projects. Motion to move?
So move.
At Purpich and then Rosie. Discussion?
Jackie, what's this final payment for? This building here?
Yeah, the project we did throughout the entire city, which did include this building. And so we held back, asked you to hold back a little bit of money as we were starting through some of our controls, not the lack of, but the understanding of working with the, what's called building management system, BNS system, so we can better control the air conditioning. And so we're at the place we need to be now in order for me to go.
So this was the retainage, so when you pay this, we are done.
Yeah, we're done with them.
I learned how, Al tells me that, keeps, keeps so much back.
Well, this is gonna... Is this anything to do with item four on the agenda? I wanna, I wanna, I wanna understand if these people did the work for the air conditioning and the heat HVAC system that we currently have, that they worked on all last year, pretty much?
Yeah, so they're related, but not, the next item isn't the result of somebody not doing something they should have done. It's a result of kind of reality, with how somebody's systems function because it's such a big building and the air hammers are pretty large, so. I went down that path, as you can probably suspect me. It was designed to be meets code and functional. There's some noise that happens especially if, I'll probably start you on that.
No, and I'm understanding exactly what you're saying, Councillor, because I thought the same thing, as we're writing a check for something and then we're writing a check on the next one.
Well, we're not writing the check, we're getting a quote to repair something, that I...
That should be in the thing we're gonna vote on now, that's how I felt too.
Right, so that, so, the whole one, number four, wasn't part of the original design? And like I said, I put it through on that app, and had some long conversations about whether I thought the design was adequate, and I feel like the design was adequate, it's just a functional thing. And when we get to that, I said, maybe we can decide to not do it, it's not required, to make things work.
Well, let's get to that, let's get to that other one. Now, we'll discuss it at the next meeting, or next.
Well, and I guess in order to get a yes vote for me, it's understanding in that they have been able to prove to you that the next item up for vote is not something that they, they should have been able to tackle in the first round?
Who are positive in efficiency, yes.
Guess that's the only way you can get a yes vote for me on that one. I trust that you asked that question, and we'll go from there then. Any other discussion on number three, the $4,999.99? Nope. Alright, all in favor of making that final payment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Number four, quote from Iron Range Plumbing and Heating for duct silencer for City Hall to reduce air noise. Motion to discuss?
So move.
Moved by Rosie?
Support.
Support by Kuivonen. Alright. So Jackie, better have explained to us than what is happening.
Yeah, so and then Jerry, he can help you out too. So the air handler is way back on the other side of the wall, the office on the west side of the building there. And so in the summertime, when they're called for a lot of air conditioning, it is pretty noisy, okay? And then it also gets a little noisy in here, and I've been complaining about that. And what I have learned throughout the last year, year and a half, and this is where Jerry can help if I'm not explaining well, is that this building management system is a computer, and there's many settings, right? And so what we've learned over time, and Mark has been diligently working on those settings, is making sure the settings are set correctly, we're gonna go with that, Jackie is keeping her own emotions and nothing. But there's a lot of if this, then that, if the humidity outside is X, something turns on or it turns off. And I still think we're learning more about that building management system. So I have mixed emotions about whether we should do this or not. But I had gotten a quote, because I've been complaining to them about the noise, okay?
But everything else is all brand new?
Yeah, the whole thing's brand new.
The whole thing's brand new.
The whole, yeah, your man, everything's brand new. So I would sit back in that office, okay? And I'd work with them to silence some of the fan in my office, and up here sometimes I can hear whistling come through their walls up there on the floor. I just, I, my jury's out, I'm ready to vote, Jerry, sorry for that.
Well, since you asked. This area, the area up on the second floor is the worst. You know, my office isn't bad downstairs, I haven't really heard it that much. But in any office they go throughout, and I know we've been trying to, there's a lot of components to the system, like she said, and we've been trying to tweak them, slow down. I mean, Brian, in your office, Councillor, it's loud in there. Those offices are the worst. So all these upstairs, and it's, I don't know if we can control it. I mean, we can try again next summer, but, you know, I don't know if there is a solution to getting it low enough and still keeping air moving through our building, because it's a big, a lot of ducts.
Maybe we could spend $8,000 and go and do a damn thing?
Well, no, I think they're saying it would do something, it would silence that.
It's not gonna say it's gonna silence it 100%.
I, no, I haven't even talked to them about it, so no, I don't think there's guarantees.
Like everybody else, I mean, $8,000, I know we could use it somewhere else if you really needed to, I mean.
So I'm happy to have another conversation with Jerry and Mark into that conversation to say, you know, are we gonna hear 50% improvement, or how much?
I think it'd be easier for me to vote on it if I had the 50/50, or 50, you know, 80%, or if it's 10%, why even spend the money? I mean.
We spent a lot of money repairing this building and getting it in shape, and I find it a tough decision, or a tough thing to understand, why Max Gray can't come in here and say, "Well, yeah, you know, just explain to us what went wrong." I mean, they obviously came in here when they made their quote and their bid, and said, "This is what you were gonna do, this is what we think you need, we voted on it, they did it." But it's not to our satisfaction.
So I, okay, so Max Gray was the general contractor, they subbed some of this work out, so it was designed by WINSAT. So I'll have Amanda either show up or write a pretty comprehensive memo to all of you, and also meet with Jerry and Mark. So come to that operating the building management system, have some comfort.
Hold it, and then find out if, what, she would know if she's gonna design this thing, she would know if the money that we would have to spend to repair it is worth it, or whatever. So let's get another opinion on this.
Well, I guess what my question is, you wanna go first?
No, go right ahead, because you might be asking.
Okay, well, my question is, is that if Plumbing and Heating believes that this is the answer, then Max Gray didn't need what we wanted done completely, then why doesn't Max Gray come in here and complete it for the quoted price at which Iron Range Plumbing and Heating believes that they can do the work?
So Max Gray did not design the system, WINSAT designed the system.
Okay.
They did the mechanical drawings, not the architecture.
Listen, they're the ones that we should be talking to and saying...
They're the ones that need explaining.
Yeah, why, why are we gonna spend $8,000 more on something we just spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on?
I get what you're saying.
And Iron Range was a subcontractor.
Yeah, sure.
So we'll work on that.
Yeah, that wasn't, that's not it, we were already close.
You know what? If I'm understanding is correct, if I am, there's still a chance that through further tweaking, adjustments, this community, like you were saying before, that half, some, all of that problem can be eliminated, maybe? I know that you tried this year, you said something, "Well, we can try again next year." Can you live with that noise until you try again next year?
It's not in my office, I can definitely... It's the upstairs, it's mainly the upstairs, I don't think it's downstairs.
It might be corrected through further maintenance adjustments and stuff.
It might quieten a little bit, I really wouldn't say that we're gonna be able to do much with it.
We've loosened up.
Not saying they'll be able to do it, not with it either, whether they fix it or not, that's something we can talk to them about, and see what they're, are they guaranteeing us it's gonna work?
It was just kicking the gang.
I think that's all we want. If you're guaranteed it's gonna be quiet so we can whisper in their head, let's do it. But you're giving us a 50/50 shot, let's just throw the money up in the wind and see what happens with it.
And it's the air conditioning part of it, it's not the heat.
Yeah, so it's a summer thing.
It's a summer thing.
And it's about a summer thing, let's see, about three weeks worth.
Right, exactly.
I think I can fix it for the next eight months.
Yeah, but I'm just saying is that if we have a timeframe, and it doesn't have to be done right now...
Let's hold off, let's hold off.
So Chief, do you hear this at all back in where you guys are?
In our interview room, it's very loud in there some days.
In your interview room?
Yep.
Have you interviewed somebody there?
Yeah, but you're sweating those guys out in there, aren't you? We, yeah, we had a Grand Rapids detective come over not too long ago, and did an interview in there on a case that they're working on, and he's like, it's terrible in there. So when you're trying to record, you know, somebody's gonna cross me, it's...
That's definitely fair information for us to take in.
So yeah, it's, it's...
But we wanna be able to guarantee that it's gonna stop that.
Again, it's a summer thing.
It's still pushing.
So it sounds like it's more of putting this, postponing this for... A foreseeable future?
Until we can produce more information, Jerry, Mark participating in the calls and...
It should be dealt with before the air conditioning season.
Okay. And you need a vote for the postponement of this, at table edge? At the table edge?
Look at this, like this particular...
Just don't approve, don't approve the quote right now?
Support the quote, but hold up on any action.
They'll have to get a different quote, any loose...
Yeah.
We can just vote it out.
Okay, alright then, so all in favor of moving forward with the Plumbing and Heating quote of just shy of $7,900, say aye?
Aye.
You're the only one.
Where are we going ahead with it?
We, oh, we're not?
All in favor of moving ahead with it, say aye. All opposed, will say no. So I'll reword it again for you. All in favor of moving ahead with the quote? Joe! All in favor of moving ahead with the quote from Iron Range Plumbing and Heating for just shy of $7,900, say aye? Those opposed, say no?
No. My first no vote.
Number four is a no. Thank you for taking the time and asking the questions and for giving us the answers. Number five? Quote and estimates for interactive technology for the meetings, motion to discuss?
Joe. Support.
Lillis and Rosie? Jackie, this is the updated from the last meeting then?
It is.
For the bigger TV?
Yep, bigger TV, 65 inch, it's on a rolling stand, we'll have a refurbished laptop to run Zoom or Teams, some cables, some special order setup, and teaching everybody how to use it. And the exciting part is on the paint detached. It's the owl cameras, so I did some reconnaissance, because some of us were able to use their conference room to conduct some interviews, and they have these cameras on their table. Now, if you look at the top left, the Meeting Owl 4 plus TAA is the newest version of that same camera that was at the IRRB. They also had the, go down, the dark picture, Meeting Owl 4 and the Owl Bar. They also had the screen with a bar, which was sound and a camera, that if you were to set that TV in front where maybe Brian and Jim are, and this table was moved over, the singular owl that sits on the table would probably be sufficient. At the agency, there was a large conference room, which you remember, that we could see ourselves really close up, and we're like, oh my gosh, that's what that bar does, okay? So we could kind of step into this, but just get the owl camera, okay? And maybe the expansion mic, which is probably a good idea, or again, we just do one. But I wanted to let you know that the stand that the monitor's gonna go on, I'm not really sure that's gonna sit high enough, if it had the bar camera, that we could set it this way, and they could see the all of you. So you're gonna have to sit down here at the table to really make it functional, make it work. Because the field of view on these cameras horizontally is 114 degrees. So if you take a right angle, add a little bit, maybe a little damage, so it's...
Glad you did that, because I was trying to think of 114 degrees in my mind, and not for me.
I was curious, did you look into what TAA was?
I did not. It's about their technology.
Some type of, I see it's a compliance, but it's not something that we're required as a...
Yeah, the FDA didn't tell me that, or IFTDA didn't tell me that. I think that when people upgrade, especially electronics, they always come up with some new fancy words to justify the next level.
I see that it's a fairly costly thing to have TAA on there, because to get the Owl 4 and the expansion mic separately would cost us approximately $2,750. But yet, you can get it without the TAA for $2,100.
Right, I vote for unsaid code, you know, ETA. If you look in the bottom right-hand corner, that's the Meeting Owl 4 and the expansion mic.
Right.
Yep. I mean, you can see it by a bar, where you might not need it. It's, that's for larger rooms, it's, I think a tutorial, one online, a tutorial one.
Pardon my ignorance, but with regard to the Owl Bar that they're referring to here, is that enhancing incoming sound, or is all the incoming sound routed through the television? Or do you know, I guess?
No, so I'm, well, the Owl Bar will pick up the sound, okay? Or the Owl Camera also picks up the sound, and it said that the range is 18 feet. So the Owl Bar makes the people at the front of the table, it kind of picks them out and highlights them, not literally does, but kind of makes one screen, and then the rest of us people that are sitting in the back, it's like smaller, but it doesn't change the personality of them.
Okay, but I mean, this Owl Bar, sound bar, doesn't enhance incoming signals only outgoing? So just for instance, if we're having a Zoom meeting with applicants for a position or something, and they're talking to us, and we're having a difficult time hearing them or whatever, that bar wouldn't resolve that sound issue, I guess that's...
Good question, I don't know, so I'll, I think, okay, I'll go to their website and do some reconnaissance. I do believe that the IRRB told me that, in that conference room we were in, that they added another Owl Camera, because they have that large table that was able to get everybody, but we don't think we're ever gonna have that big a table in here. So I see, and they reasoned that with two bubbles, and I think she told me they got rid of the Owl Bar, maybe the sound just. But let me do some reconnaissance on, does that enhance, okay?
Possibly, I'm thinking of bubbles and a bar now.
Move, table this, then is what the thought is?
Yeah, I'll do some more work on that, no problem.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, motion by Rosie to table, till future info is here.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Table. Alright, number six, renewal for 2 a.m. license permit for 214 Grant, doing business as Red Garter Lounge 214 Grant Avenue. Motion to move?
So move.
Kuivonen?
Support.
Support by Purpich, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, excuse me, number seven, resolution making application to Iron Range Resources and Rehabilitation for Community Center Improvements, motion to move?
So move.
By Purpich.
Support.
Support by Quayvinen. Any discussion here at all?
Let's hope.
Jerry, in the past, when you've done anything like this, do we see a fairly positive return on it, or?
The, the city buildings, I have never done a grant for a city building. Utilities I do. So I'm not sure about the returns on community center or not.
Okay.
We've done parks, we've done water, sewer, that type of stuff, right, yeah, buildings. So I haven't seen.
Jackie, any thoughts?
So we've gotten a variety of grants over the years for the auditorium and also for having the heat uses for the dedicated use. And a lot of the success depends on what other grants on the queue that people apply for. Because it's competitive and, you know, maybe your scoring might not be like everybody else's, but if there's fewer grants, and that's just.
All I can say is no. So I mean, it's, as John would say, behooves me to not want to.
Behooves, yes.
Did I use that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Oh, right, I'm getting smarter.
Yes, you are.
You know, and, I don't know, the IRRB has just been, it's a good outfit, they help a lot of communities, they help us. It's just, give it a shot.
Any further discussion at all on the resolution making the added application? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. Please, IRRB, please, don't take a little bit, don't hurt anybody. All right, number eight, resolution authorizing submission of grant application for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six St. Louis County Community Development Block Grant Program. Motion to move.
So move. Support.
Support by Lewis. Any discussion at all? This is for West Ebbell Sanitary?
Sanitary Sewer Force, yes. We've been getting bumped from PFA the last few years, got bumped back, so it sounds like they're gonna be in mind for this year, it's not guaranteed yet. But for twenty-six, it looks like we're gonna be able to get some findings for that. So this will just help us if we qualify. They put in a free app, now I have to do the whole app once I get the okay, but they have to give me the okay from city region.
Let's get it taken care of. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, number nine, resolution making application to the IRRR for the West Ebbell Sanitary Sewer Force Main Project. Motion to move.
So move.
Purpich. Support.
Well, support.
Support by Quayvinen. Any discussion on this one at all? Lots getting done on Jerry's side. No further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry. Number ten, resolution authorizing application for grant navigation support for the city of Ebbell wastewater treatment facility improvements. Motion to move.
So move.
Move by Lewis, support by Rosie. Discussion, small change on it, line number one, whereas, line number one should be the city names MSA Engineering as its fiscal agent, the city does not name itself, says administrator.
That's what they said.
MSA Engineering. I would love to, maybe it's something like, I read this, and it's like, that needs to be changed. It's not how it went. Jerry said, make you look smart. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry as well. Number eleven, set regular city council workshop days and times. This goes back to our workshop conversation that we had a little over a week ago about setting a workshop for the end of every single month on Tuesdays, leaving everything as is currently for our normal communications and meetings on the first and third. But it would just be the fourth Tuesday, not the last, but the fourth.
So the Tuesday?
It, it could be the last, but fourth Tuesday, motion to move.
So move.
Eric, Lewis? Support by Rosie. So hopefully this will make things a little bit easier for everybody to have what their plans are and things that are on their mind, or things that they're working on, to be able to have always kind of a set date and not have one sprung up by three days ahead of time and try to sling it together and make it easier on administration as well to know this will be a meeting. It's two o'clock on the fourth Tuesday.
Mary, could you guys also, when you make the motion, indicate that if that happens to be a holiday, that the meeting will be moved to the next day?
Move it to Wednesday.
Move to Wednesday, then at two o'clock?
In the event.
In the event of holiday.
And I would assume that this is gonna start in November?
Will start it for November.
Okay.
Ooh, after deer season.
Good call, guys. Any further discussion on that at all? And those workshops are open, so community members, come on in if you want to be a part of our workshop. You can sit and listen and hear more of the conversations and what happens on some of the bigger things that are going on. So we have motion by Lewis, second by Rosie for holiday, or excuse me, for it to be on the fourth Tuesday at two PM. If it is a holiday, it'll move to Wednesday, starting in November. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry, thank you very much.
If I may bring up a conversation we also had, is that besides this workshop, right, where it's gonna be like a regular meeting where we can kind of work with the agenda on that day, if we have something that comes up, we'd like to possibly have the opportunity to also have workshops before city council meetings. So since council meets at five thirty, depending on the topics, it can be very specific. And like, since you all are planning to be here anyway and work that week to be here, that, that might work also to, instead of another special day, we could also present it as an opportunity if that's a good idea.
So you want to stay afterwards to have workshops?
Right.
You want Joel to be here as well, that's what I just heard her say.
Actually, I want to say that, so I mean, whether we start at three or three thirty, depends on how many topics we have on council meeting day. And those would be deemed a special meeting, because we would only do it if we needed to.
And that's three days in advance then?
Yes.
So we just need to announce it at the same time that you're gonna send out the package, essentially?
Yes, definitely, post it, and you post it on the board.
So that's telling me, no goofy meetings on Wednesdays, Thursdays, or Fridays, they're all Mondays and Tuesdays.
Unless it's a.
I like that.
Right.
Ooh.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are my days.
Well, we can change that real quick. Very fast.
Sure, summer's over with now, so.
It helps us too, if we're planning a consult or somebody that come here, I would say, we know that we can meet, you know?
It is.
Before Tuesday, or before the council meeting.
That works.
Flexibility, I like that.
Wonderful. Do you want that voted on as well, or we're just verbally talking about that?
You're not having a standing policy of the council, you can just do.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
It's different than the position that was here.
All right, perfect, that means it allows us to move on to number twelve. Application for exempt permit, Laurentian Chamber of Commerce at Crow Musabi, Ranger Recreation Civic Center at nine oh one Hattrick Avenue. Motion to move.
So move.
By Quayvinen?
Support.
Purpich. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion will carry.
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
Well, we have a, we had a Rockborne meeting on Thursday, but I had a doctor's appointment meeting, so we didn't go. And I'm pretty sure they were preparing for what's going on right now, the curling championships around here, which is really nice. And then I was just informed today by Mr. Rosati that we're gonna have a meeting nine o'clock Wednesday morning for golf commission. So we'll let you know a little bit of how it went this summer. Perfect. That's all I got.
It's perfect. We finally have a airport manager. He came to us after our town hall meeting and made an application. Had a great interview, I think he's gonna be a great asset to the airport, along with the other individual we have working out there part-time right now. Friday, there'll be a meeting with, I guess, the work committee. We're gonna look for a couple of extra hands, on-call snowplowers. You know, if we get a big problem, there's been three applications, we kind of think along those lines that besides the two that we have, if something goes wrong, we can count on a couple of other people. It's just like, you know, for us cutting grass and stuff in the summer, it's just part-time help. Be on a rotation, we'll figure that out, we'll have the new manager figure out a schedule for him as far as when they show up and when not, because, you know, Mr. Donnelly does work at another facility. You know, he's on nine hours, on nine days, and off nine days, so he's not there all the time. And we get a big snowstorm, it's good to have someone out there to clear the runways and make sure that we're ready for, and open for business, and hopefully get some business back at the airport. We just had another meeting for the airport, we had some resolutions to pass for approval of the equipment that we just, just got and everything. Honky-dory, a brand-new pickup truck, beautiful truck with a.
Have a loader coming.
Have a loader coming, should be here by the end of.
November?
November. And that loader has attachments for snow blowing as well as plowing and stuff. So we're looking forward to getting that going. We just had a park commission meeting. We were discussing the park rules and regulations for the Veterans Park campers. We discussed the dog park, of course, again. We're trying to still find a better place for the disc golf. That's on the agenda. We have a couple other things we're looking at, Jerry's gonna be investigating some of this stuff, but Dog Park is open, it's up by the.
There was some gear today?
Behind the central, or the old IGA building, the park back there, the baseball park, it's open, ready. We're waiting for the contractor to pour some pillars to get the shelter in place, that's ongoing, we're still fighting. Not fighting, we're fighting to get a time to get it in there with the contractor, but it's gonna be done, and that's all I have.
Also, Lewis?
Very little, we did have an HRA meeting. Business is running pretty much as usual, we had a update on the rental of the facility, and we're at a ninety-eight point whatever percent occupied up at the HRA, so that's pretty outstanding, actually. The director is concerned, as is I'm sure every other HRA in the nation, where we're headed with this government shutdown. We did get funded for October, and they anticipate getting funded in November, but beyond that, nobody is really cognizant to where we're gonna go. And the only other update, unless you would like to do it, is give a quick update on the search for a community economic development coordinator. Just give you a quick update that, or the position was advertised, applications were received, and we're now in the process of reviewing the applications and setting up in. So we're trying to leave that alone as expeditiously as we can, and we'll report back to you when we get a little bit more detailed information. That's all I have there.
Thank you very much.
You had an EDA meeting, correct?
Yes.
And I believe that one of the main points of discussions was the, the August overlook and the addition of optics for viewing these different cameras. And then the concern for the security thereof, and discussed maybe cameras or something, or whatever. I have my, the word I'm looking for is, we can't ever have nothing nice because of vandalism and stuff, and these would be, they're expensive and they're easily vandalized, you know what I mean? So I would like to see that, I think it would enhance the whole experience, but I'm concerned with security of those devices, and like I said, they're not that cheap. So I don't know what the answer is there. As far as the other thing, I think everything is going as planned, we talked a little bit about the park downtown, the, and the plan we have to enhance and continue to enhance and advance that area. Other than that, it was pretty much to say we went over some financials that we seem to be doing quite well as far as we're not hurting as far as, you know, the permits and stuff of that nature to do things with. So that, I think, did I miss anything, Jackie?
I mean, you leave a place for replacing that lot here.
Thank you. There is structural, I would think, infrastructure, the concrete, stuff of that nature mostly, that has to be dealt with because it's, the driveway coming out is tipping towards the building, and someone mentioned that we don't want it to develop into a launch pad when they come out the garage. It's gotta be dealt with, and as you know, northern Minnesota, it moves, you know? My next-door neighbor's yard is slowly becoming my yard, everything's moving, and that's the way it works, all it knows is all concrete. Stuff of that nature, so it's, it's something that has to be done, it really does. So we're working on that, and we have some codes, I think, or we're getting some, we have a lot of pictures, I know that, I see the damage.
Yep, so the temporary heat's been installed in the living place garage, and the permanent heat, you guys approved, and that'll be on order. And then the concrete, they're gonna plan for that this springtime, and that's on the heels of, I lost track of time, last summer, that we replaced the retaining wall that was falling, falling down, and redid the parking lot and from the rain yard, because it was just really awful, it was running towards the building and undermining those concrete, I'm gonna call a thing, because my brain's not working, that would come up on the front door, so, you know, the building's like thirty years old. So the time has come to make some of these improvements, and we're fortunate enough to have a hundred percent occupancy and have enough reserves to be able to do some of these things that are important to keeping it a real nice facility for our seniors.
Yeah, the heating and the air force, those were antiquated, and they were, it was time to change those all too. And it's pretty important to move that air through that basin, especially all vehicles and stuff, or through the parking garage, so. I think it's our money that's well spent, and it's our investment, a hundred percent occupation, what else can you ask for? That's what. I think we did have a consolidation meeting via Zoom, which I just love. The information from Jesse, I don't want to mispronounce his last name. The information from Jesse, I don't want to mispronounce his last name, something of that nature. Very informative, was well-versed in what has to be done. Some of it was more orientated. They incorporated both on-call and full-time and they had problems there. We won't be dealing with with any full-time departments. But the information he gave was was good. It cleared up a couple of questions as to what a taxi district does, what a fire district does and the benefits and different obstacles that they ran into. And it's the same obstacles that we ran into last time, so we're familiar with those. This is why I don't like Zoom meetings, is that the meeting ended and the Zoom ended and we never got a chance to set another meeting date or anything like that and no one has stepped forward to do that. But we don't have anybody who is a chairman or a, you know, that, "Let's start the meeting" type guy. I surely, I do firmly believe that we need someone to organize a little bit better and remember, you know, to set that up. I am not volunteering for that job. However, if I'm pressed in the service, I will do my duty to man and country. And I don't want to, but I will, but I don't want to. Someone else I hope can step forward and say, "I'll bend the guy and say, 'Let's start here as a subject.'" But we got a pretty good idea of what a fire district does, what it entails. And it's pretty interesting. It'll need much more discussion. Things that'll come before this council as far as what we want to do to participate, how we might be able to participate in a a manner that shares everything a little bit more equally, if you know where I'm coming from. Because what you have a district, supposedly that district assumes all debt of all departments, supposedly. And that's the information that I've got. And right now, we're the only department that's going into this with no debt. So our assumptions will be their debt. Just a heads up. And if I'm wrong, somebody please correct me, because I hate being wrong. But that's what I got out of the meeting was that if you go in with debt, then it becomes the district's debt in which the district is us fail and Gilbert, so. So if they're paying for a truck, we're going to be paying for that truck too.
The John Mill and the other part.
It's the district's truck.
The district.
Yes. It's not the other truck or Gilbert truck. It's the blah-blah and we're not going to get into that. But what are we going to need? Don't care. Just want the service to be provided at a better level for the people that we serve. And I do believe that it will, if we can work past this other stuff. But like I said, be advised that there'll be assumption debt in a district. I think that's all.
Thank you very much, Consular. I just have a few things. Number one, we had a VITA meeting and Virginia Edworth Economic Association. And we own a building together over by the Rockridge School. And the loan on that has been paid off and all that we're waiting on there is documentation from the government showing proof of a paid-off loan, but government's taking some time right now to work some things out. So we are not receiving that paperwork. Other than that, I had a question for the Personnel Committee. Is there a set date when we're supposed to see, I guess, I'll just, I'll look at you, Jackie, maybe you know the answer. That we would see the postings for both the zoning and the EMT director positions? Is that, do we ever talk about a timeline at all on that?
We did. Talked about October.
Okay, October's not done yet, but I just, I didn't know when I was on the City website this last week and I was like, I don't know if we made a date. Okay, in October.
Yeah. I don't like to make dates because I get hijacked.
Oh, okay. And is this something that we just need to set and just saying in the future is always two weeks? Is that what we're going to do?
Oh, you need two weeks to have it out there?
Have it posted for two weeks?
Yes.
Once a summer? Okay, okay. Perfect. Thank you Personnel Committee for answering your question. And then the last thing I was going to mention is that we're working with Chief of Fire, Chief of Police, and our Director of the EMT to help out on Halloween and have a trunk-or-treat over near the old new grocery store, however you want to look at that now, where people can come and bring their little ones on Thanksgiving, wow, Thanksgiving. That's the third time today I've said that, on Halloween night.
Got turkey, I'm hungry.
A little hungry. But we can come on Halloween night over that direction by the and you will see those those groups of ours along with other community people passing out candy in a safe and easy way with a little bit of fun. So keep that in mind. If there's anybody that's interested in any of that, feel free to give a shout and I can help guide in that, as we would love to see more people in there here. That'd be four-thirty to six o'clock on Halloween evening. So I don't have anything other than that right now. It took a little time away to clearly get tired. But next up, Chief, you've got anything on your mind?
I have nothing else tonight, Mayor. Thank you, though.
No, thank you.
Chief, are we past the grace period on parking?
We are past the grace period on parking.
This is the first time in a long time I've gone up and down the street on the Adams and actually seen the cars in the right spots. I mean, it was amazing.
We have a long ways to go on the season.
I know that, but it was, it was really nice to see that, other than in front of the old shoe factory there, that everything was
Sure.
right where it should be. Good job.
I do have my question for Jerry. Sorry, Jerry.
Jerry, you're up.
Alright.
But when are they going to start on that hillside, between north and south? I thought it was this month.
When I talked to him last, he wants to wait till the ground freezes, because he's going to have big equipment.
He probably told us that.
Big equipment on north and south court streets, plus the middle there, so he wants to wait till middle of November possibly.
Second weekend of deer season, it tightens up pretty good.
Yeah. And if that was, I talked to him just a couple of weeks ago and that's what he would like to go in November.
My question for you is, the benches that were ordered for the pickleball court, are those on their way somewhere? Are they being put away because the season's coming to an end?
We just got them put together at the shop. You know, we just got them, I think, a week and a half ago or so. Put them together and now we're contemplating. We don't, really don't want to put them out right now because we're going to have to bolt them down or somehow or another. So they didn't come with holes in the flat bar, so we're going to have to do something with that. We want them bolted. If they start moving around, they're just going to scratch up that surface.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so you don't want people moving around, so they're going to have to be bolted. So we could get them up and bolt them down right now, but, you know, figured we'd probably put them away and wait till.
That's fair. Okay.
You've got some pretty good inventors down there that'll come up with some.
Oh, yeah. We already figured it out, but that's what we're kind of waiting for.
Perfect.
Are you tubing somewhere? You know, we'll come anytime.
Yeah. Yeah. And please, people do not go on those courts and think shoveling it or snow blowing it is helping us and all that will destroy everything that we've done there, so please don't.
Will we lock them up? Will we lock the door up when you want them out there and what, because you might have somebody that's going to go out there and run around and play.
There's plenty of room to play without having to go on a pickleball court.
It goes back to what you said about security and safety. It only takes one to say, "Oh, I'm sorry." And after it's twenty thousand dollars of the damage, who's going to say "I'm sorry"? I'm just saying, take us, throw a chain on there. At least this way, if they crawl up and over the fence, we can throw the book at them.
Jerry and I were discussing at our park rec meeting, you know, we had a lot of damage done to the shower stalls and stuff out at the Bets Park. And not only that, but the failed tennis courts were vandalized. And they were all done by young kids and stuff, so we got to make a time to lock up those, the gates to the tennis courts. I'd say we do it.
And it goes back to the conversation we had a few months ago, that when this child, no matter whose child it is, gets caught, they get held to the full extent of the law because, I mean, it's enough of these, just letting them get off. I mean, look what it's doing to us.
Right.
I mean, look at the overlook. You know, I mean, it's, it's heart-wrenching. Not only pisses you off because you're putting all this time and money into this stuff to make it beautiful and it takes a couple of kids that think they're cool to break it. Well, you know what? Keep thinking like that because you're going to get the book thrown out, you're going to get caught. It's not if you get caught, it's when you get caught.
Do we need to take down the pickleball and the tennis nets?
Yes.
Do you have?
Yeah, I wouldn't want to leave them up over the winter.
I'd just rather not have them see elements and get destroyed.
Probably the end of October, within a week.
That's not a big job.
Could you use them nets in a new place?
In that groovy?
Probably not.
Probably not.
You could have just told me that right away.
Yeah, but we figured we'd leave them up at least till next week, so, you know, it's still kind of nice, so.
We do get some, we do get some good afternoons and whatnot.
But we want to be safe and get down there or get hot, whether it gets too cold and.
I understand there were some people there today.
Wet and cold, you're still going to go play?
Yeah. They're athletes. God bless them.
Didn't see you there.
It's because I wasn't at the meeting.
Alan, anything on your mind?
Nothing really. We are wrapping up the lead service inventory of the city of Edworth. We get all that stuff submitted to the Department of Health later this week and that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for Alan, like timelines on a?
You did a good job of the Leodius overlook putting in that pad. That's excellent. I went in and out of there and I was scared for my life coming off. It was a good job. It was you guys, wasn't it?
No, I think.
The county, the county did.
No, the county. Well, you still had a finger in it, because you said, "Yeah, that's right."
Yeah, I talked to Jerry about that.
Excellent. But thank you anyway for any type of participation you had in it.
Is there a timeline on when we think we're going to see some possible progress on the parking lot?
So I've been in contact with Mesothic Tubuminus. We're still trying to get contracts put together as of earlier today. So once contracts are in place, the next step is setting up for a pre-construction meeting. We'll get a little tighter timeframe, initial conversations where they're hoping to get in here this fall and get gravel done and get the site prepped for that.
Okay. Yeah. Anything, if we're able to use it. And is there a time, we can talk right after this meeting, that myself, you and Mr. Purpich can try to get up there and make sure we're all on the same page and make sure that the Coach Rodby Tree isn't, it doesn't sound like it's anywhere near being touched, but make sure we're just all on the same page?
Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. I'd appreciate that. Anything on your mind, Jackie?
No, I've probably talked to them.
Joel, you ready to go home?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor.
Wonderful. We appreciate you as always. If that is, if that is everything, we will convene and we'll call us in the German. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Have a wonderful one.